I'll call this meeting the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Hall.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here. Please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on today's actions. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll first entertain a motion on the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
So moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, the agenda is approved. We will next move on to public comments if there's anybody in the room or on Zoom that wishes to make a public comment on something that's not an agenda item. All right, hearing none, we will move on to claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Michelle?
Good morning, Board. Our total bill payment today is eight hundred eighty-two thousand, eight hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-nine cents. We've got a couple of large payments in there I'll talk about in just a minute, and the share of sixty forty fund, those bills are two thousand, five hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And we are paying Peters Construction for courthouse renovations today, two hundred fifty-three thousand, one eighty-four and seventy-nine cents. And we also purchased some equipment, a John Deere tractor with a mower for two hundred nine thousand, fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents, and also a single axle dump truck for a hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And I think that's all the large significant ones today. Any questions?
Now, Michelle, this is, Michelle, this is Tom.
Yes.
I had an email the other day, what is, what is the county receiving at the current time for the commercial backfill?
Oh, that's down to, I think, about five hundred dollar, five hundred thousand for the year. We won't-
When's that end, do you know?
We've got a few years left. I think we're in about the third year of seven or eight, so yes, that keeps going down, about a hundred and eighteen thousand a year till it's gone.
Okay, and then what did we budget then for the rest of it, to make it up? Or are we just going with a half million?
I budgeted what I expect to receive, and so the rest is made up with other revenues and probably property taxes ultimately.
So we ended up with a million dollars roughly?
Just, just half, just half a million this year is all we'll get from that.
Yeah, and then we taxed for a half a million, is that true?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, then, go ahead.
All right, any other questions, Board? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, we will receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, engineer. As Michelle said, we did, we have received one of our single axle dump trucks. We are excited to get that, that has been a long time, it's been over two years to get that truck. This is, this will be our first use of the blue and white flashing lights when it's in snowplow capability, so it can only be used in the winter months per state law, so we are looking forward to that. We will get those lights on the new truck and then it should be operational for winter Just a short project update, our Canfield Road project, that has, will have the pavement markings applied tomorrow, and then we are hopeful that the road will be open by Thursday. And then on Tama Road, our bridge crew is still working on replacing, we have replaced numerous culverts on that road in the last four to six weeks. We have one more large covert to replace, it's a fifty-four inch concrete covert, we'll be working on that probably starting tomorrow, and that will probably take a week and a half, and then we'll get those patched up with asphalt, and then we should be ready for, to resurface that roadway next year. I know that will make a lot of people happy down in the south part of the county, and then the bridge crew's got a few miscellaneous items, and then in a few weeks they will be moving over to Big Woods Road area where they will begin their bridge replacement project for the year. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, other department heads or elected officials?
Good morning, Board, Facilities Director Rory Giving, just wanted to give you a quick update on the project here at the courthouse with regards to the new elections department, the auditors, the basement, and the new nursing mother's room. Right now, we are just a bit behind schedule with regards to the casework and the furniture, those are the two items that are lagging, the deliverables. With that being said, though, we are looking at completion by the end of August. If we can obtain some early occupancy approvals for the new elections department, we may be able to start moving the existing election folks over there. Our hope is to be able to do that the next couple of weeks, if we can get this early occupancy before the casework arrives, and then that will allow us to start on the Phase Two, which Phase Two would be the, the auditors department. Phase Three has been, that is the treasures department, and that is still on the schedule for after the election. The board meeting room, AV equipment here in this room, we do have a contract, we have a ninety-day completion date, so we're looking at the end of November that they have until, until that time to get that completed. I don't know if they're going to use up all of that time or not, but that's what the requirement was in the bid form. Pinecrest and VA renovation, that is ongoing, we're still working with architects and engineers, we're doing discovery, planning and design, so that ball is still moving, and I will continue to give you updates as we get some more information on that. HVAC upgrade project, another ARPA one, you'll see that in the agenda moving forward. We are hoping to move forward with Modus Engineering to do some discoverable work on that as well, so. All in all, we've got a lot of activity, and all parties are fully aware of the goal of getting contracts signed by the end of the year to meet the ARPA requirements, so I have not been notified as of now that that will be an issue, so. Any questions for me?
Yeah, Rory, Tom, I talked to Mendy this morning from Emergency Management, is there any new update on getting that siren hooked up? I understand it's been out there for a while.
Yes, we have, we work with RC Systems here in Waterloo, and we've been on the schedule with an electrical company, a local electrical company, to go out there, we're installing a new fifty-foot pole that that alarm will be on, and I'm being told that that should be completed by the end of next week.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials?
Mr. Provide an update this morning.
All right, anybody on Zoom? All right.
This is-
Yeah, go ahead.
-Mendy from Emergency Management, just to add on to what Rory was saying about the, and to jump on with what Supervisor Little was saying, I did get an email from Radio Communications on the outdoor warning siren from Hickory Hills, they stated it was going to be, and I apologize, I just lost their email, it will be first part of next week that that will be completed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other department heads or elected officials wish to provide an update? All right, hearing none, we will move on to the minutes approved from the July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, minutes are approved. Next, we'll move on to the consented agenda, this will be approved with a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Next, we'll move on to section seven, this is contracts and agreements. Item A, this is a resolution with the lowest responsible bid, reasonable bid, received from Aspro Incorporated of Waterloo, Iowa for the installation of two-inch asphalt overlay on a section of Cedar Valley Nature Trail from south of the Evansdale Bridge to Wyden Road and intersection crossing at Wyden Road, and a section of trail from Spruce Street in Newport City to King Road, less the one-quarter mile section that is currently concrete in the amount of six hundred forty-eight thousand dollars, six hundred forty-eight, one hundred nineteen dollars and fifteen cents, to be approved and contract awarded utilizing American Rescue Plan funding. The same has been approved by the Conservation Board and recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Mike?
Just a quick, just so you guys know how far that six hundred fifty thousand takes us, it's about three point six miles, just slightly under that, so it's another good section of the north sixteen and a half that is going to need to be overlaid, another nice section of that that's going to get completed with our ARPA dollars, we're squeezing them as, as much as we can.
Excellent, thank you. All right, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. This is item eight, this is, or item B, this is resolution to approve contract amendment number nine for the professional services contract with origin design of Dubuque, Iowa for construction, administration, and observation services of Division Two, Bid Package Two, paving project on the Cedar Valley Nature Trail not to exceed an amount of eighty-seven thousand dollars utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. Same has been approved by the Board, the Conservation Board, as recommended for approval by the Board of Supervisors.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item C, this is resolution that change order number one received from Peters Construction for the multi-department remodel project in the amount of two thousand, two hundred seven dollars and eighty-two cents for the relocation of ductwork, soundproofing, duct installation of existing lines, and additional data drops be approved, and for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Rory giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Rory?
The only thing I'd like to add on that is we did factor in a thirty thousand dollar contingency plan where these funds will be pulled from that.
All right, Board, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Hall.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. This is item D, this is resolution to approve the contract with ACOM Technical Services Incorporated for two thousand, or for twenty twenty-four washburn sanitary sewer improvements planning in the amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars for the chair to sign said agreement as recommended by Michelle Wiener, Finance Director.
So this will be the contract that will help us determine costs for the projects and evaluate what needs to be done for the washburn system. Doug Schindl with ACOM is here, if you have any questions for him today, too. And by the way, the letters and the magnets went in the mail Friday, finally, it took a while to get the magnets, but they're, hopefully people are getting them now.
Excellent.
Well, I think you did, I asked you the question as far as it was just the commitment of knowing that we can have the financial commitments in December, or December thirty-first, and Michelle said yes, I don't know if you wanted to mention that or comment to it or not, I said that was just a concern with these ARPA dollars-
Right.
-meeting those timelines.
Yep, yep, Michelle's indicated that, and we definitely can get the report done, kind of the priorities that we want to do for washburn and make sure that we can expend that three hundred thousand dollars initially, at least get a contract on board for the ARPA dollars, so we're definitely aware of that, and we'll-
And that's just prioritizing than a list for us, I guess, as far as we need-
Yeah, and then in addition to that, there'll be additional improvements that we're looking at, we, right now, we have seven or eight projects that we kind of have in the scope that we know about, and we'll work with staff to develop that priority list, and obviously the key ones will be the ARPA dollars to get those, but then you'll have a priority list going forward on the needs for the washburn system.
Yeah, thank you.
Excellent.
Michelle, this is twenty-four five, this, is this coming from general fund or is this coming from the sewer fund?
This will come from the lost revenue portion-
Okay.
-of the ARPA funding.
Of ARPA, okay.
All right, have a motion or resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. This is item E, this is resolution with the five-year lease agreement with Rickcock USA Incorporated for a printer for the Department of Health and Human Services with a monthly payment of a one hundred five dollars and ninety-five cents, be approved for the chair to sign as submitted by Erin Casilla, Blackhawk County Department of Health and Human Services.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions?
I was going to say, Michelle did some research on this for us.
Well, actually Supervisor Leyland helped, Erin Casilla is traveling today and couldn't be here, but this is replacing a leased copier printer that was purchased in twenty fourteen, so it's, it's, well, lived its life, it's time to move on, I think, so they're not, you know, asking for something new every year or anything like that.
And we had done these types of purchases in the past-
Yes, yes, it had been, that was our first project, was to figure out, did the Board even need to approve this, it's an interesting arrangement between the state and the county, but we have approved them in the past, so we believe we should follow our procedures.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, the resolution is approved. This is item F, this is a resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and Cedar Valley Occupational Health for occupational services be approved and for chair to sign for the same as recommended by Amanda Fezemeyer, Human Resources Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Chalka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Item G, this is a resolution with the agreement with Modus Engineering for preliminary design with a fee not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars for HVAC upgrades for the jail, Pinecrest, and the courthouse be approved, and for the chair to sign for the same as recommended by Rory giving, Facilities Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Thank you, Board, this is a little bit unique with regards to professional services, typically if we're looking at hiring professional services for, say, a piece of equipment such as a boiler, chiller, something like that, we would ask them for a lump sum fee, but given the complex nature of this particular project and the fact that it includes three facilities, we felt it would be in our best interest to have them do preliminary exploratory work to really narrow down what exactly it is that would be in our best interest to replace, and so what we're asking for is this not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars, it would be an hourly, we're paying hourly fee for that exploratory work, and then after, once they hit that amount, then they would provide us that remaining lump sum fee for the design and construction documents for this project. This particular professional services is going to be paid for from the ARPA lost revenue fund, then the project obviously will be paid for through ARPA funds, so.
All right, any discussion or questions? Hearing none, this is a resolution, roll call, please, Mr. Reader.
Hall.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Chalka.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes, resolution is approved. Now, let me move on to section eight, other business. Item A is a motion to approve the purchase of one hundred seventy-five XUB key security keys with extension cables and adapters for the approximate cost of ten thousand, five hundred dollars to establish multi-factor authentication for the sheriff's office in compliance with SEGA's security mandate as recommended by LU IT Director.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Al?
Good morning, Board, LU IT Director, a while back, SEGA's, who is ran by the FBI, mandated that all law enforcement agencies have multi-factor locally, so any, any staff that access the computer that has CGI, they have to have a second factor, which would be one of these UBTs, and that's just purchasing these to move forward so we meet the deadline. Any questions?
Have SEGA just purchased similar things in their own budget, or have they done it through the county previously?
I think this is something new we've never had before.
Not these particular keys, but I mean things they've done, like for security purposes or anything like that.
I would love for them to purchase all this stuff for us, but, no, I think they're, they're outlining the new compliance and they're just asking people to do it, so I'm sure there are other counties that are, you know, this is, it's a budget crunch for them because it's, it's not, it's not cheap to implement for someone, so.
How frequently do we have to do this?
Has this gone in front of the SEGA's board?
I don't know if this is gone in front of the SEGA's board, does, because this is coming out of IT funds.
Okay, so it'll be for everybody over the jail?
It'll be over, everybody over at the sheriff's side, dispatch will have to handle their own instance of it, and then eventually it will actually come over to the rest of the county in a different project.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, any further discussion or questions? This is a motion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item B, this is discussion of washburn sewer system proposed rate increase. I don't know if there's anything for today, so.
We, we had nothing, this was just an opportunity for any residents to come and gather information for themselves.
Um, is there anybody that wishes to speak? I don't think so. All right, we will move on to item C, discussion possible board action allocation of the amounts budgeted for rural circulation to the Blackhawk County libraries.
Do you want me to give a little introduction?
Yeah, if you want to, just give a little refresher.
Because I think there were even a couple of people maybe missing last time we talked about it.
And I didn't get these pulled up earlier, but they, so the issue that we ran into, the Board has increased funding for the rural libraries in the past two years, last year it was increased by six percent, this year it was increased by another twelve percent. The longstanding contract, you do sign it every year, but the language hasn't changed for, I don't know, a number of years, does have a requirement that the county's contribution is limited to fifty percent of each library's contribution, their city's contribution. This year, I didn't get the calculations when the contract came, but I did receive it later, and when I looked at it, I realized Dunkerton, unfortunately, our share was exceeding their, theirs, by seven thousand, I think it's seven thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. So we need to re-sign that contract, but you also need to choose what you want to do. I know one of the other librarians had posed the question, well, because really, when you allocate your funding, you pick an amount, but then we allocate among the libraries, and that's based on a number of factors, their rural circulation, their budget, their population, that kind of thing. So when we set that amount in the budget process, we don't have all that information in front of us, and we don't necessarily know what portion of the overall contract each city, each library will receive. So one of the librarians had asked, well, will you just reallocate that to the remaining libraries, the seventy-four hundred? So I said I would ask that question, but obviously that's up to the Board, the way the contract is written today, I believe the county would just retain that, that extra.
Like in the general fund?
Correct, it would, yeah, it's actually in the rural fund, I'm glad you said that, it is rural fund budgeted, so it would remain in the rural fund if you choose to do that. You could choose to do that, you could choose to change the contract and not require them to contribute fifty percent, and I'm not promoting or disagreeing with any of them, I'm just throwing out some ideas, or reallocate it to the others, whatever.
Could we gauge their interests in, in increasing their contribution?
Dan, I was going to say, I'm glad Dan's on today, but I think he mentioned at the last time when we had this on the agenda of contacting them, I didn't know, did you follow up with that, or were you able to have any response on that, Dan?
I did not, I didn't get a chance to contact them.
Okay, yeah, I think that'd be, I'd like to see us try to do that, I was going to say, while we have the contract, I think even, in fairness to all the parties that signed this, we're all making that same contribution, and they are as well, and I know Chris had talked about allocating, reallocating it to the others, but I think by code, I'm not even sure, some of the things that we have to follow with the contract with those cities, so, yeah, I'd like as first alternative we can approach them and see if they'd be willing to do something, because it did say, when I looked at code, it was like, that they can be terminated, you know, the contract can be, but by mutual consent of the contracting parties, well, we're only one of those parties, but there's several parties we'd have to reach out to, and I thought, they, I don't know if they were even aware of what they started, or what they did.
Yeah.
Because it might have been an incorrect number just by accident.
The same as we were unaware-
Yeah.
Last year, it wasn't all right, like it's, yeah.
Yeah, you know, at the time, they set their budgets, they may not have known what our pool was, and again, I didn't have the statistics, and I don't know if they had calculated them yet, usually it's one of their librarians that pulls them all, all seven of them together.
And they've had several different changes within the librarians, we said, too, so somebody, not everybody's aware of the contract and the agreement and some of that, too, so, that'd be great.
All right.
So Dan, did you want to follow up with that, or want someone else to, we could certainly do it? Michelle, could, you could maybe contact the library, you've been working with librarians anyway, so, I was going to say, if that's all right with you?
Yep. And do you have anything specific you want me to ask, like?
It might actually be beyond the library, it might be-
City.
-their mayor, initially, to say, hey, are, are you interested in bringing that number up to create that, to find that match?
Yeah.
Right, we need that, we need their local contribution up seventy-four hundred dollars in order-
Yeah. So- I'm happy to do that, if we want to do the mayor, I'm happy to contact Mike and ask-
Yeah.
And start there, and see what he says.
Okay, probably makes sense.
If they're, if they're not interested, then that probably changes our conversation a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Michelle, are they able to do that after they certified budget, raise it?
Well, they, they can, they would have to identify the funds in their budget, you know, they either have to, if they have extra revenue, or maybe they have a vacant position, like we, we often have that happen, or their fund balance, but, you know, they would have to decide.
They have to, and they may not want to, Tom, that's up to them-
Right, or be able to.
But then we make our decisions based on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a good first, next step to take.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else on this? All right, we will move on to D, discussion strategic plan proposal.
Well, it was just a brief proposal that everybody got, that was kind of what he was throwing at us, I think, for feedback and seeing what we thought of for second and third opinions, I don't know if anybody's got comments, I was gonna, I know I forwarded also that he had mentioned as far as agreeing with my suggestion in an overview, and I wanted to make certain the Board knew what my suggestion had been. I had mentioned how busy we all are and scheduling and stuff could be difficult, and I wondered how that would work out, and he said, you know, obviously his timeline changes based on our participation, and if we can't do the meetings, so I had just said, I was suggesting that he, in the overview of that first session, where we say we're doing the planning to plan, that just inform us what that means so that we're all on the same page as far as going forward, and I think his fear was that, you know, if we said we'd complete this in six months, and then he's not there at six months, we'd say, like, I thought we'd have this done by now, and it's just everybody else, you know, being on board- And it's just everybody else, you know, being on board with the same agreement. So I didn't think that was a problem, but. Two and a half hours, I saw some of the sessions that he's got kind of tentatively scheduled on Tuesdays. And I didn't know if that's good, bad, or.
No, I think as, as far as my part, as long as we got a couple of weeks notice of what the schedule is, we can, we can make it work. I, I'm definitely gonna prioritize time for this.
Does it, I was thinking, does it make sense to do it following board meetings? Or would we rather do like afternoon, everybody kind of do board meeting and come back after lunch? Or he didn't suggest anything, so I'm just trying to.
I prefer going right after the board meeting.
A little hard to time it sometimes, but I think, I'll be honest, the September dates I'm a little nervous on.
Yeah, I bet you are. I figured you would be. That's all right too.
But we can make it, can make it work.
Yeah, well, we can try. And like I said, some of those have to be changed. I guess we'll see. Because he did stick with Tuesdays, it looked like. Did every, how would, did everybody feel about the way he outlined those, the first one being with us? And then the next, like the next two were gonna with department heads?
Good, good.
And others, like I said, he mentioned those too. Okay, voice of the people. Well, any comments or feedback, something you want to?
My only, my only concern on the two and a half hours, if we're at an hour and a half board meeting, do we start to get a little?
Yeah.
Are we able to ensure that they are a quality two and a half hours, right, towards the end of that?
Three and a half session or whatever it is.
Yeah, yeah, which, you know, we're all grownups and, but it just requires.
We want to be productive.
Want to be productive, yeah.
So was your thought, then maybe do it a different day or different?
Not even necessarily a different day. I wonder if those sessions have to be two and a half. Would it be better to have, instead of two and a half hours twice a month, is it better to have an hour each week that month? Right, I don't, just to, just to keep things productive, but.
Shorter sessions, but maybe.
Maybe more frequent, I don't know.
That's why I say it's the time to.
I mean, he's the one who facilitates this, so he gets it. I think he'd be able to, I'm sure he would have an opinion there, but it's maybe a question to pose. I think generally it looks really good, though.
Yeah, and if we need to do this like on Thursdays or something instead, I think that generally works well for the budget. Doing Tuesday, Thursday meetings.
That's true.
And do them both days, right, or?
Yeah.
Or just do, or, yeah.
Or just, just stay Thursday, just for.
Throw some options out there if we could do others. Tom or Dan, anything to add to that, too?
Just basically.
Thursday mornings would work good.
Basically what Tavis was saying, they'll tell you that after so many hours in a meeting, it doesn't get very productive.
We can tell you that.
We can agree, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, I'll get back to him with this or send those comments back and see where we go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Item E is discussion possible board action regarding community service funds request.
Uh, yes, I tossed this on the agenda. Obviously, we heard from community organizations about a month ago. We've had, we've had their applications for a while now, so just wanted to add this to the, to the agenda. I sent around just sort of my chicken scratch notes on where I think these could, could fall in. You know, largely supporting most of them, about half of their requests, maybe with a couple of exceptions. But just wanted to, I guess, open it up for discussion, thoughts. Or do you think it's important for us to sort of make a call on these?
Yeah, I would be ready at next week's meeting to start making decisions on it. I think it's good to let the folks know that we'll have it on the agenda.
Oh, so they could be here to, here. Sure, I appreciated your scratches. And like I said, I'd made some of my own and kind of tossed those back to you as well as far as some of my thoughts. I was hoping, I guess, we could develop some kind of a plan or criteria, but we kind of talked about that. Maybe for the next round, we'll have some of those things in place because it gives them, I think, some guidelines to go by as well as us and see where we go. Some of the things that I mentioned at Tavis, I said, there's so many needs out in our community. And yet, you know, they seem to get the same ones, repeats all the time. And I'd like us to think about broadening that, or at least maybe if people have been here two and three times or whatever, what we can do to look at others' needs. Looks like, not something we couldn't change in the future, but it looked like if we were kind of staying in that one hundred thousand dollar range, it lets everybody know too what we have to give away, when we're trying to give these needs in the community and meet those, rather than make these seventy-five thousand and hundred thousand requests of this fund.
Yeah, I think, I think as we look at, this group is one thing. I think future groups, I'd love to see us get into categorizing. If we don't have as many applications and the pool is still there, but at least an initial priority of, you know, four or five categories allocating X amount of dollars. And to your point, putting a cap on the requests because it really is difficult. You know, when you got seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of requests and hundred thousand dollars to give. That just.
Well, and the reason for that, I know it was mentioned about the communication piece from the cattle congress need at last week's meeting. And I said, and I think some of that confusion became that there were two ways to apply to the board of supervisors for the needs of the cattle congress. And one was to make the direct request of the board. And the other was the community funding requests. And they were obviously a little bit too, you know, differing kind of proposals.
Yeah.
And so they made that clear, I think, too, that that was kind of why the numbers were different. But they were trying to meet the needs of an application process plus this, but different ways that they can approach us.
Yeah.
That was one I think we were looking at to probably, well, I don't know, maybe you're thinking of talking about that one next week as well. I did send some questions, or I did send an email back, a response to Deb after we received the cattle congress, that I would, I did have some questions that I'd follow up with her and try to get those to her this week so she could have those answered, but.
Yeah, I think we initially last week talked about that next week, we would look to make a, make a decision on, on their request.
Is it, is it too much to have both on the agenda for next week?
I think that's fine.
Okay, we could, okay.
Probably address some more.
And I think that going forward, for the future years, we could, you know, publish a limit on requests, and we could even set that at whatever the highest allocation is for this year. Could be just kind of the published limits so the folks know that we get requests a little bit more in line with what the whole budget is.
And if we were looking at categories, I know we've just bounced some things around, youth or economic development or just different categories that we want to try to meet of the community and those.
And I think that also generates some additional applications, right? Because we do know there's much more need than the, it's great that we've got fifteen-ish applications, right? But we do know there's additional need out there in each of those, in any category. And maybe by articulating that we want to see applications focused on housing or economic development or youth, that that might, that might elicit a few more applications for funding and allow us to diversify our investments and then spread those dollars throughout the community.
And now we're using social media so much more too to get the word out that that'll help too, but yeah, that'll be good. So next week.
I think a follow-up to Linda's earlier statement, when the monies were being allocated through solid waste, the board, they used to fund services every other year. So if you receive funds this year, you aren't eligible next year. That way they were able to cover more services than rather than giving the money every year to the same people.
All right, anything else for this discussion?
So we'll plan to do both next week.
All right, we will now move on to Item F. This is discussion possible board action regarding establishing a compensation board.
Okay, well, we got the emails or information from Grant. It started us off thinking about it, even though I think the week before I said we'd been at a, at a meeting of the counties. And it had kind of been a mix, you know, it was about five, five or six counties. Some said they were gonna retain them, some said mentioned that they were going to scrap theirs. And so, yeah, it was kind of good timing that I said that we needed to have something in place only in, before budget if we were going to have compensation, continue to have them, but so. Here, do you throw this on the agenda?
Yeah, yes. I guess, I mean, I'm open to, to not having one. I mean, like, over the years, sometimes we've been, maybe they didn't spend all that much time in the meeting discussing things. And it's still such a weird kind of dynamic voting on salaries that include your own as well. But, but I'm, I'm open to other ideas too, so it's.
I support not having one.
I think over the years, ninety percent of the time, the board of supervisors changed anyway what the request came in from the compensation board for the mere fact that the board knows what the budget is. The representatives for the various elected officials really don't know. And to be honest with you, their job is just to take care of the person they're representing. So that's the reason why the board over the years, I'd say almost ninety percent of the time, have changed the request. I think we're better off just to bring it back to the board of supervisors.
And if, and if we did go the route of not having one, you know, it'd be my intention to just support giving whatever the across-the-board raises each year, just have the elected officials included in that.
And I, I think to add to that, it was, I think there was, for a long time, at least when I started, I think the compensation board made the recommendations high and always thought that was the expectation. We'd cut them in half.
Yeah.
And that was just kind of, and that's why some of the meetings were very short for quite a few years. It was just like kind of the.
Then you had the state changing the rules about every year too, how much you could cut it or what percentage. So I think it's better off to stick with the board.
I could do either.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think my preference would be the board. I like your, your thought of just including it in the overall, you know, the non-bargaining raises that we already approve as a board. I think we've demonstrated a willingness to make pay adjustments outside of that if and when necessary. But I think just as a, as a standing rule, indexing that or including that into those non-bargaining raises makes, makes a lot of sense.
I know ultimately it's the board's decision. I didn't know if it was something that the other elected officials would like to speak to or weigh in, or if we.
I'd certainly welcome hearing from anybody.
On thoughts, on yes or no, or? No? Not too many, no.
Dan, were you trying to say something?
No, I just, I, I just support going without a compensation board. We can make that decision.
All right, E, this may not be the time to interject here. If we're going to not have a compensation board, just like if we were going to have one, I think we should have some board action to that effect. The reason is the statute with the revision isn't entirely clear on whether it's been dissolved as ISAC says, or whether it hasn't. And so I think to be on the safe side, it's a good idea, either way, whether you want to have one or whether you don't, to take action to that effect. And what the, what the new statute says is that it can be dissolved by a board, a majority of the board of supervisors. So I would have a motion or a resolution, I mean, to dissolve it, just to make sure we're clear on that fact. Doesn't need to be today, but it, it should be done at some point.
Is this on as an action item too today?
It is.
Yes.
It could be today.
I'd make, I'd make a motion to dissolve the compensation board. I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We had any further discussion or questions on this today, Board?
Do we need, just for a question in terms of the motion for, for Mike, do we need to then assign the responsibilities of that compensation board back to the board? Or is it just sort of assumed?
It's, the statute states that if the board of supervisors has not established or has dissolved the county compensation board, the board of supervisors shall carry out duties and so on. So, yep, it automatically will take place.
And I did see that it was in the code or ISAC information or whatever too, at any time if we change our mind. Going forward, if next year we decided we'd rather have them again, you can.
And would it be, I don't know, today, but possible or appropriate to, if there was majority support of just tying it to the non-bargaining raises each year, of putting that into county policy?
I don't know if we can do that or not. They did sound, didn't it sound like there was supposed to, there was something in code that we were still gonna have to look at, for example, with the sheriff?
There, the sheriff, yep, the sheriff is still singled out there. And I, I want to go through it a little further to determine the extent to which it may impact that for others as well.
Yeah, that was the only one I said, making sure that we were comparing like positions and similar positions.
And I, I haven't read the statute in a while, but it seems to me that there is something like what they're calling the show your work provision in there that gives the, that tells the compensation board, whether it's the supervisors or a separate board, how they arrived at their decision that these increases should be made. So, and maybe all you need to do is say that we believe that it should be the same across the board that we're giving to non-bargaining employees. I don't know. But I think that should be investigated before you make.
Okay, yep, I, I agree.
All right.
Here we go.
I was just gonna mention that, and, because we, HR supported the comp board a couple of times now. So I would, and we've looked at that documentation where you have to kind of actually show that with under, I think you're referencing Back to Blue with the sheriff, right?
Yeah, that's right.
So we've kind of, since that changed, we've been providing that. Plus, I think each year I pull the ISAC salary data. And that's something that we look at with department heads and elected officials. So now that just would really come to this board to be reviewed. And so, if that helps.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call on this. Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Little?
Yes.
Chelka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes, the resolution is approved. Item nine, any reports or information from the board?
Michelle, I got one question. You mentioned a couple of times ARPA loss revenue funds.
Yes.
There, does that money have to be spent by the end of the year under loss revenue or accounted for?
You know, nothing can be a simple yes or no answer. In terms of our reporting to the treasury, we have, on the advice of consultants, we have said we used it to pay salaries in the general fund. So what that means is we don't technically have a December thirty-first deadline for anything now funded with replacement revenue. But what we chose to do was take that funding and use it for projects. So we do still have pools of money available that will be able to be spent after December thirty-first. And I do believe most of that is getting spent. I think when we get down to the health department and/or the H V A C project, we will have a choice to make that I believe, if things all go as planned, that the expense category funding should all be used or allocated by December. And to complete those, we will have to use portions of what is remaining in the replacement revenue bucket. I've been kind of waiting till some of those projects fall into place to provide you with an overall update of where we're at. We are, we are getting through the logjam, I think, finally, with the ARPA expense category projects. And as those come in the next, I would like to say three months, but it's probably closer to five, that we get those all under contract, that we'll have a much better idea of where we're at with the overall funding.
And we have been doing some Plan B, I guess, strategically looking at other projects so that we don't have to give any money back so something falls through or we end up with overages.
Yes, short of a catastrophe, we should have enough under contract that we're not returning any funds. That, that is definitely our goal. But that's also why we will have to do, use the law, replacement revenue funding to complete some of those larger projects because that's how I'm balancing out the expense.
So are we gonna, are we gonna end up spending then all the loss revenue funds?
At this time, I don't believe that you've approved enough projects to use them all. Again, that, so much of that depends on how the bids.
Again, that, so much of that depends on how the bids come in. We've seen, for example, conservation, you allocated $5 million total for Cedar Valley Nature Trail. I believe that's gonna come in at a, I think, based on the last piece today, it's probably about 4.7 million. So, while we thought we were gonna use $5 million, and we've been, I've been using that number all along in the budgeting, now as the final bids are coming in, it will be lower than that, freeing up $300,000 towards the other projects that aren't yet complete. So, it's, it's gonna be quite a, little bit of a dance here in the last few months to determine what projects are gonna use ARPA expense funding, but I do feel pretty confident now, I'll feel better when we have the projects out to bid, but it does appear where we should have enough projects under contract by the end of December to use all the funding and not have to return any, which is the goal. Actually, it's the requirement.
And you're talking about loss revenue, too?
I don't think all that will be, there may be some left that's not committed with that, that's the piece I just don't know until we have contracts.
But those dollars aren't subject to return?
But they, but those don't get turned back, we get to keep those, that's the whole point. So, yeah, who, it was nice, we had, actually, it was an Iowa legislator, I believe, that worked to get that $10 million allowance for replacement revenue, and that, that has, will be a lifesaver for us in meeting this deadline, because we know we can use that to finish things that can't be done.
And as soon as, as a clearer picture comes on what the, what Pine Chris is gonna cost, what H-Track is gonna cost, then we can move on to, you know, other projects to use, during the near the loss revenue dollars.
Yeah, but I do anticipate that being several months yet.
All right, any other reports or information from the board?
Only that I did hear back from UCC lobbyists wanting to come and make a report and ask what date, and they asked for the August 20th or 27th. After I saw the 27th of Garnett's stuff, I said, how about the 20th?
Okay.
Just an FYI.
And just a quick heads up, Mike and I finally did connect on at least an initial draft of a local preference for bidding policy, so I'll probably bring that for discussion just amongst the board, and take that to department heads to get some input, but I think it's, it's good for us to have some level of agreement that, hey, this is what we'd like to see, and then talk to department heads about, you know, implementation, but it's, there's at least a, a draft that we're on at this point.
Taken from another, someone using something similar, or?
Yeah, there were a couple of, couple of counties that we used, I think Mike.
I think we started primarily, I'd have to, it was quite a while back, but it seems like we took both from Lynn and Johnson when we did that, and then it was a while back when I first drafted one, and then we had a revision, just, I think, just this last week, that we went through to make, to make it more of a required process, and Tavis had proposed some alternative language, and then I proposed some alternative language to that, and you know how it goes.
But I think, I think by next week, we should be at least enough to bring it here and discuss and see if we can take it further.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot that'll come out in discussion too, so.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned, thank you, everyone.